Hi.
First meeting code I put in didn't come to this, this place.
I know, I had to add that number that I found last time. Not really sure. But that's all about, but the second time I got in. An email from Sarah Whitfield said she's got a sick, she's got a cold and won't be there, but.
What far away state did she collect that in?
What?
What far away state did she get that in?
I know she went somewhere south. I saw something on Facebook.
Yeah, Florida, I think.
Anyway, so, but she said that the, she's picked up the surveys and they will be mailed tomorrow. She's gonna take them to the post office tomorrow.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. So that's a little little after our attended deadline of last July.
You're glad we didn't rush into preparing anything.
Yeah. Did you ask by any chance, ask Bruce about the tiny house?
No, but I'll. He asked me a question today. I'll ask him. Now, I'll have it tomorrow.
I was rereading Dennis's email about the what the playing board, I mean, what the board selectmen wanted us to do. And I think the the fee thing, I think it's better to put it on the fee schedule instead of take it out of the.
Yeah.
So. I guess we could just amend the that part of the ordinance taken out.
That's spelled correctly.
What?
For all these years, you'd think was, oh, I know why it's capitalized, typed all in caps, spell checker didn't like it. I'm just trying to get through the code of ethics. I haven't had time to do anything.
Well, that looks pretty good, I thought.
So far, I'm at the top of page two.
Yeah, no, I looked through it and she probably saw I made some suggestions. But I don't know what, who the town officers are in them. And I thought maybe they were the fire chief and the police chief and. But anyway, that could be taken out if we don't need it. Cause they're also employees. I was gonna ask Sarah that tonight. If we do have such a thing as town officials or whatever, I can't remember the term.
Well, she has it as elected officials.
Yeah.
United officials, appointed by the board, appointed board members and town employees. I think that breaks it down nicely.
The appointed officials, that's what I don't know what they are.
Well, I think that's us.
We're appointed. Yeah.
So. Well, I guess. My wall clock's fast. I was gonna say it's 5:30 and it's just you and I, but we got five minutes.
Yeah, my computer says 5:25.
And I've got my email open for anybody saying, I can't get in.
Okay, did you, how did you like my facility use policy? Did you read it?
Well, I'm trying to get there. I don't have any time to do anything.
Well, I know you're trying to get there because I got the notice that you had opened your email this morning.
Oh, yeah. I got it open, but I didn't. Fringed it is what I did. So planning board should go, I hope real quickly.
Yeah.
Here's my sick life.
Hi, Deb.
Yeah, I've got trustees tonight, so you'll be zooming in here and I'll be zooming in the other room. That's a lot of parking in lay down area.
The last time they expanded, I went on a sidewalk. I'd like to know that I did go on a sidewalk once, twice.
Yeah.
That's when they're gonna put a greenhouse in, on the south end of the building, but I guess they never did that.
So wait for those movable planters that divide up parking. I don't expect them to be there. And there's a find an elevation. There are a lot of contours there if they're gonna turn that into level parking area. There's at least 10 feet on the end towards the old building. I can't even imagine what it would cost to carry the stormwater management system. I found it quite surprising that Wayne, when I was out there, didn't seem to know much about it. Isn't that nice? Well, this plans has two references to sheets, to plans, and there are no plans, no plan references on here. This has been grabbed from some other data and not nothing attributed to a surveyor or anybody else. There's a symbol that is unexplained. Yeah, that's a lot of contours they'd be filling. There'll be more Emily's. Okay, now it's well past 5:30. There's only you and I.
Oh, that's 5:29.
That's right.
Here's Emily.
There's Emily, speaking of, speaking of the devil, no. Wrong one.
She's muted.
I don't know. It's the right one.
No, she's not.
Now we can talk, now we have stopped talking about her.
Hey there.
Hey. Susan John wants to know how to get here. Where do I find that passcode now?
It's 796. I just write it down.
836796.
Yeah.
Are you answering, Susan? You answer her.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
What?
You're gonna get, answer her email?
Oh, I will.
I can. What was that number again? 836796. We'll find out. Looks like she's got time. So I, I read in the paper, Emily, you're rewriting the accessory apartment or something.
All night.
Good evening. Should be, just leave it open. Roll right into it. All right, bye bye. And she'll call me back and say I typed it wrong. When you set these, I put them in my calendar. My calendar had the wrong one for tonight, that's for sure. Oh, no.
Who's Anna?
That's good.
Hi.
Hi. And Susan Jones.
Well, good. I guess I gave her the right number.
Thank you.
Yep. Not so far. We need one more. Yeah, at least, right? Why do I think we're missing a third person? We're missing Al.
Chris.
Chris and.
Oh, that other, yeah, Roy, Don.
Don, yeah. Lester.
I couldn't remember his name.
By his house often, I don't remember.
Measure M must be very busy. Every time I go by there, the parking lot is just jammed.
Yeah, every time I look out my office window, you can see the parking lot is just mobbed.
Yeah.
At any time of day.
I know, every day, every time I go by. I wanted to go in, but I think figured, well, wait till it's not so crowded. I just got the email from Maine, I don't know who does it, State of Maine, the COVID thing. And the, the numbers are, have gone up over the the top level. Can't remember what they call that, when it's gone over the top level, it's even more.
Oh, really?
They keep increasing. Isn't that nice? I, I know with this, I know, I know what this little piece of plastic goes to, but I can't remember. I obviously picked it up and saved it and put it in my pocket. Hey, Chris.
Yay.
That gives us four. That's a quorum. Can you hear us, Chris?
Yes, again.
Oh, good. Let me swat this for around speaker view, cause I prefer that. So we kind of have a quorum being present, that wrong one. I don't think I have an agenda printed out for this meeting. I'll call the, what it is today, December 13th meeting of the ordinance review committee to order, first order of business is the minutes of the last meeting. Let's see, Anna wasn't there.
Chris wasn't there.
Chris wasn't there. Oh, I, I moved to accept was printed.
I'll second.
Yeah, I've got no discussion on it. Do you have anything? All right, roll call vote. I vote in the affirmative. Jackie?
Yes.
Emily, and so Anna, you're abstaining?
I'm stating I wasn't there.
I know. And Chris, you're abstaining?
Uh, I thought, I'm pretty sure I was there.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. I thought Chris was there.
Oh, good.
In the notes, it said he abstained, so I also think Chris was there.
Good. Well then, are you voting in affirmative?
Yes.
I don't have them in front of me. I don't know why, but. All right.
What's, what, what's the vote?
Uh, three, four, one abstention. And I apologize, I did not print out the agenda, so I don't know which one comes first.
I'll get it.
I don't know why I didn't print it out. I don't see it, but it's gotta be here.
Two of the minutes, report on the marijuana survey status. And I talked to, I mean, I got an email from Sarah Whitfield and she said the everything is ready to mail. She will pick it up tomorrow from the printer and take it to the post office and so it should be in the mail tomorrow.
And buried with the Christmas cards.
Yeah.
All right.
And number four on the, or on the agenda is the code of ethics.
Should we go to number four, the code of ethics? Cause Anna just banged them out like crazy.
You say that, but it took me, I think, three weeks, so.
Didn't seem like it. It seemed like you volunteered and then, then they appeared in my inbox. If that was three weeks, man.
I think I learned if I don't show up to meetings, I get volunteered, but I was happy to do it.
Yeah, that's right.
Go to the media. Was digitally twisting your arm. It was a definite, I wonder if they basically all said, we're not gonna do it, so.
The only thing I don't think that, the only thing we questioned was the municipal officers. I don't know whether we have municipal officers. But if not, that can just be taken out very easily. Otherwise, I thought it was good.
Thanks. Yeah, I think I, after you sent, if, after you mentioned that, Jackie, I went through and I changed it. Maybe I missed some places, but I did elected officials, appointed officials, appointed board members and town employees.
Right.
I guess really it should be appointed board and committee members.
That's the one I have printed out.
And we do, we do have elected, we do have elected committees. Budget and school committee are elected. So I, I didn't hear whether that's in there or not, but.
So, um, other towns were calling those elected officials.
Okay.
So the elected officials I have as a person holding an elective office subject to municipal elections under this code.
Yeah, okay. Find anything wrong with it? Emily, did you look at it?
It did. I thought it was really thorough, Anna. It's, it's impressive. I took a look at it this morning. Nothing jumped out at me in terms of any confusing language or one section that might not fully translate into another. So I think, I think it's a pretty great draft.
Thanks. So I missed some of the contextual conversations about why we were drafting a code of ethics. And I had to guess which parts were relevant to the request being made. And I kind of settled on any type of conflict of interest, discharge of duties, that sort of thing, but there are code of ethics that are much, much longer that I didn't think we necessarily needed. Is there anything that I missed that might have missed the purpose of having this?
I think when you put in all the, the main statutes there should take care of most everything.
Okay, great.
The only comment I had so far, I'll admit, I have not gotten in very far, that is in the first paragraph, second line. You say ethical conduct for elected officials. Then you go on to a list, a lot of people who aren't elected, so. I just thought you could strike elected and it would be better.
Okay, this was a combo, Anna and Jackie section. So the elected officials, but those are elected officials though, aren't they?
Yeah. Yeah.
So you mean just strike, having them listed out since it's in the definition?
I would just eliminate the word elected, conduct for, con, by establishing a code of conduct for, colon.
Where, where are you?
First par, first paragraph.
Okay.
Second line.
Yeah.
Then goes, currently goes ethical conduct for elected officials, colon, and then a whole bunch of people separated by basically the groups by semicolons. I think you could just go ethical conduct for, colon, and strike elected officials, cause you've listed all those people down there.
Yeah, is there, I agree, it's redundant. Is there a reason you think it's better to strike the grouping rather than the individual people?
No, I don't want to strike the end. I'm gonna keep the selectmen budget, school committee pointed. But by, in my, my limited grammar skills, of the way that's constructed, you then run into, well, you're talking about elected and then you list people who aren't elected, they're appointed.
Okay.
I just read too many cases where it's a grammaticist or somebody like that who's called in to satisfy some point of law. You know, the, the Oxford comma, that's a classic.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you.
Five million dollar comma. Plus court costs.
Okay. So then for consistency, in the future, we refer to the groups rather than all of the specific offices or positions. So then do you think each time that we reference these groups, we would list out the individual positions?
My, my biggest part of that was elected officials. My my biggest part of that was elected officials, we could change that to some other verbiage than elected officials. But.
Okay.
Don Oyster wants to know what the thing is, hold on just a minute.
Three, six, seven, nine, six. He's probably using the old one, whatever one I had.
I will give him this passcode.
It's, uh, yeah. Eight, three, six, seven, nine, six.
Charlotte Boyne also wants to know how to get in, just hold on a minute. It won't let me put the code in.
What's he having a hard time with, Jackie?
I've got, I just sent it to Don Oyster. And Charlotte also wants to know. I'll give it to her and hope it comes. Oh, Susan John also wants it just a minute, and I will give it to her.
I think Susan and Charlotte made it in.
Susan's on, Charlotte's on.
Susan is on.
Yes, thank you, Carl answered me, um, right around the start of the meeting, so all good, thank you.
Okay. Now I need to know. Okay, can you tell me what changes you made, because I.
Oh, sure, do I have, I'm editing in my Google Docs, do you wanna track all the changes, Jackie, or do you want me to?
Say that again.
Um, do you want to track the changes, or do you want me to track the edits in a live document? And I can do.
Yeah, why don't you do it in your deck, and then send it to me?
Okay, sounds good.
Anna, one really minor change on page three, under the definition of town employee, any person employed by the city, do you want to just change that to town since Wisconsin?
Yeah.
Not a city.
Thank you.
Funny, I read that just a few minutes ago, and it didn't ring, ring out.
So I guess when Dawn's in, we can go back to this discussion, because Carl, I just had a realization. Um, which is that it might be better to have the groups instead of the individual positions and boards and all that, because those are subject to change.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so maybe it's not best to list the individual positions in the purpose, because those are subject to change. Like, we could add positions, we can add boards. So perhaps, yeah, to keep them as groups.
Okay, so appointed, so be appointed and I mean, appointed and elected?
Yeah, and then employees. And does that cover everyone that we would want to cover?
Point is elected and employees, it should. I should want to put consultants or anything like that in there.
That's what I was just thinking, too, in case the town hires, you know, someone for some small purpose.
That's great.
We could put on it, or anyone. I don't exactly have you do it, but I'm thinking anyone that's connected with the town like consultants or engineers or.
What about anyone who's completing work on behalf of the town?
Then it.
Probably forest.
Yeah, it has to be pretty general.
Yeah, but I'm wondering, does that make it too general, like, if you say, um, for anyone doing work on behalf of the town, would that apply to, say, like, the Friends Group or the Creative Alliance that might be doing an event that's in Wisconsin that's sponsored by or in sponsored in part by the town? Would they to comply with this code of ethics or complete the form? Or should it be consultant, which would, you know, count towards like your engineer, it would include me um, and anyone else that do working in that kind of capacity?
That would include attorneys.
I would think so.
Engineers, all that sort of.
And maybe you could even define, Anna, consult and in that definition, put including but not limited to engineers, attorneys. And I don't know what other consultants you'd want to list, but that may cover your base.
Right. That sounds good.
Okay, so including but not limited to engineers, attorneys, did you say one more?
Trying to think of a third.
Consultants.
Oh, one, we are, we're trying to define consultants, I'm trying to think of who else you might engage.
Royal people, um, septic designers.
Hmm, sanitary engineers.
They're engineers, hydrogeologists.
Serving.
Geologists, yeah, I might even get a serving, actually.
Okay.
Contacted by a town committee.
Okay, you know, along with that, we should, for appointed official, we should also probably include language, including but not limited to, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I couldn't find anything except the the nitpicky stuff, like if there's no one, there's no one point one.
I need help with the nitpicky stuff, Jackie, that's all you.
So that would just be one. And then when you when you get down to one point two. Uh, well, then the next one would be two.
Okay.
Authority would be two.
Okay, so perp purpose and intent would be one, authority would be two, like that?
Yes, and then when you get to, uh, one point, two point one, they're elected officials. That would just be that would be indented, and it would just be two point one.
Okay, so I need to do some indenting.
Right, and the next one would just be two point two, also indented. And two, two point three, and so on.
Okay.
I love to do that kind of thing, so.
Okay. I did the first couple, and I'll send it, I'll send it on over. We still don't have Dawn.
Oh, I just sent him the code. I'll go back and look at my email and see.
Maybe he needs a whole link. Not just a meeting code.
Okay, all right, I will send it to him.
We're waiting for Dawn.
Is there anything else on the code of ethics?
Not for me at this time, boy, this is deja vu. Wonder where I've heard this all. Name municipal association training, maybe.
Are you part of that MMA, Carl?
No, but I've been to their training sessions for planning for boards, probably four times now over the twenty something years.
Oh, nice. Do you recommend them?
Definitely.
Okay.
Like, I would like it to be a requirement of all planning board members.
Nice.
Never happened, but I would like it. And of course, last year, they were virtual. It's too bad, because they had great, don't know who their caterer was, they were good sandwiches. I think Jackie's been with me twice.
What?
MMA training sessions.
I've only done it online.
I thought you went with me to, uh, Augusta one time, years, years ago.
No.
Must have been the other Jackie.
What other Jackie?
No other Jackie, I would think, funny. Yeah, I kind of figure every four or five years, I'll take a brush up, not much changes, but.
Now, yeah, because I took it in, I didn't really learn much.
Oh.
This is my.
Maybe we should continue on, hopefully, if Dawn needs to back up, we can.
I second.
All right.
Uh, down. Uh, property facility use policy. Comes in with a form.
What?
So town use property even comes with a form, you did.
Right, because it's got more, it's got more things added than the policy. I mean, spells it out better.
I love the way you organized it, it's very clear.
Thank you. I'm not sure about all the the liquor permits and everything. Like the bartender certificate of liability and that sort of thing, so. But I figured that that's something the attorney can figure out.
Yeah. We need a period, I think, in the liability insurance section.
Oh, yes, after act.
Yes.
I'm only thinking of the church using the common, and it says, uh, no pets, well, there's a dog, dog per dog thing. Uh, girls, uh, we cook hot dogs and hamburgers. I'm not sure where the dunk tank that we use several years, haven't lately, but would go. Do we really want to borrow all of those things on on every one of them?
No.
Because if we do, Jackie, you're gonna tell the church that you were responsible for that. I get blamed for other things that I voted against, like, like the historic preservation committee.
Okay, under event restrictions. Maybe we could put well. Well, you can see, we need some of those restrictions.
Oh, yeah.
Except for the churches. Let's just put down the churches accepted.
Well, can pets be in outdoor areas, or are we worried about liability? Like, if two dogs got enough. Like, if two dogs got in a fight. Outside the community center.
They could do that, and I could be just walking to or from one of the paths that you access to the community center.
Yeah, it could get bitten, baby. Okay.
A lot of this, and a lot of that going to be covered by a liability policy coverage. I mean, I'm, I'm going with. Really? We're gonna, we're gonna, or say we're gonna rent out the. The, the senior center with kitchen for a birthday party for, or the pool party, and rock it all out with balloons.
Well, I don't know, I, I know that when I used to do craft fairs, they wanted a million dollars worth of liability insurance for a day.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I'm not questioning that, I'm, um, restrictions, I'm wondering if somehow we can move that to. Have to be approved by the. As part of the application.
Okay, I have suggestions. What if we keep no smoking as a restriction? Say, no pets. Inside. Leave candles as a restriction. Remove balloons.
Why do, why remove balloons?
Do we not want to let people have balloons? I guess, Jackie, what's the thinking? Why should we restrict balloons?
I don't know.
And, and your candles, uh, how many times a year is the walk outside of the UCC church down to the main street lined with? Candles burning and paper bags with sand?
This, this is when somebody rents. It's not, it's not prohibiting candles anywhere, just saying when you rent a place. If you rent the, the gym at the, at the community center. You can't have candles or. Balloons or bounce houses or inflated.
You listed the town common. The church's use of the town commons are rental, whether they pay money for it or not.
No, that's what I put on the, if you notice, on the application, where it says town common, I have zero. As a fee.
It's still on there. So the restrictions would apply. I, I'm just thinking that takes out so many things that people want to do for. I'm not sure they've had. Bounce houses or inflatable, say, at the community center for like their winter thing, but they certainly have outdoor fires.
And.
Might have grills.
Jackie, are you able to share your screen so we can all see the draft? Or Carl can.
I don't get it up, hang on.
Don't you have a copy?
I do, it's for Susan.
Is it a PDF or? Talking to myself, folks, sorry.
Yeah, you won't let me share my screen.
Code of Ethics. And property management. Policy. Now, let's put it over on that screen. And see if I can share. Stop that. Screen two. You got it?
Beautiful.
Almost as if I knew what I was doing. So we were down here at. Event restrictions.
Yeah.
These are common things that are on everybody's. Forms that I looked at. But pets and candles and balloons and. But we can cross them out, if you don't open there.
Well, can we move them to the application so that they can be ruled on as part of the application?
Well, shouldn't it be in the policy? If they read the policy and then.
Okay, well. No smoking and. Smoking would, I think, be universal, but I.
Right.
I should think things like pets, candles, ballrooms, grills, uh, inside grills would be. And not to be a wordsmith again, but. I don't, I use that kitchen in the community center. I'm not sure technically it has a grill as part of its setup or not.
I don't know.
Don't think so, but that's not a guarantee. But I almost guarantee you, there's a. Propane gas grow on the side of the building by that door.
Alright, well, you know, if you're going to talk about grills inside or outside, that would only apply. To the municipal building. Meeting room. Scout hall. Or the community center gym. I mean, everything else is outside.
I would might change it to barber, well, scout hall doesn't have any. Again, it's been now, it's been twenty years, kids are all grown up. I don't remember that they had any real cooking facility there.
I don't know.
Um, I might change that to barbecue grills.
Okay.
And then you could say, yeah, they don't belong inside at.
Or we just put inside, because. That would, that would include the community center.
Yeah.
Municipal building.
Anyplace with a cupboard, yeah.
Alright, so inside barbecue grills.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think these bounce houses and inflatable, you know, those things, I think they're worried about somebody getting injured. I don't know, I'm, I'm just, most of the samples I've looked at have the lotus in.
Yeah.
I'd rather put them in than have somebody say, well, why aren't bounce houses in here?
How about? So non, uh, no smoking period, and then our barbecue grills inside. You could put item such things as. And pets, I get, such thing as. Pets, candles, the rest of those will be decided on a case by case basis. At the application or C application. With the select board. Give their judgment.
Okay.
No wonder, wonderful. I don't remember what it was, town celebration in, uh. You know, shoes, both, uh, Boden. This summer, just tripped over it, driving through towns, and we said, wow, let's go see that, and now we didn't do it, but they had a big. Jump thing set up for the little kids. That was definitely on town property. Definitely a town sponsor, you know, sponsored project.
Well, I don't know, if you put them in.
And why can't we list them? Have, have the, the definite no on smoking and, and inside grills, inside fires. And. Move other things. And says, other things such as. Pets, bounce houses. Will be allowed, maybe allowed on a case by case basis.
Alright, we're, oh, I see what you're talking about. We, if we, I was gonna say why pets, but then I, then if we do the town common with the church, we can't. They'll have them pet parade, the dog parade.
Caught up. That's a nice try to have no, no charge for the town common, but. To me, it's down common and the sunken garden kind of fall in the same type of. Property, so. We can leave that up to select board.
Well, this is the list of. Dennis gave me.
Yeah. I'm just saying that the mandate zeros. And we just leave it blank, just like the others.
Well, if I put zero on, because exclusive use of the town common. I mean, anybody uses a town common anytime, you know, they can walk their dogs there and everything else.
Yeah.
I should put exclusive use of, of the. Town common, because that is what the church asks for, because they don't. Let other people come in and sell things.
Are there any historic buildings that are town owned that could be rented out for events?
These are the only ones that, um. Dennis gave me, I didn't have the scout hall on there. But, and once, and I think the community, the municipal building meeting room gets rented out, and that's where they have the. Garden club.
Okay.
Land sale.
I was thinking if someone wanted to have a wedding in a historic building or something. But I don't know if we have any properties that are town owned that are empty.
I don't think so.
Okay.
You know, the other piece, building that I can think of, we own is, um. The art center over by, um. Used to be the high school. Can't make think of the name of the street, it's on, down the street from the Episcopal church. But that's under, that's under a long term lease, or, we say, hope it's going to be a long term lease.
Yeah, that's the. Art gallery.
Yeah, art gallery. So. That would be excluded because it's separate. Maintain as a separate lease and. I know it's, they spend in the news that they want a multi-year. Um, lease so that they can qualify better for. Grants for fixing it up.
Right. You must be reading my minutes.
I just read with Susan John Prince. And Charlotte, didn't mean to leave Charlotte in. Alright. I think this is a great first draft, we'll see it again. Next year, I guess. Do we need, yeah, this is it, we don't meet again this, yeah, we do meet again this year.
Right. On the twenty seventh.
Darn, no offense.
Unless you want to cancel it, because it's, you know, holidays.
Uh, well, we can poll at the end, who's gonna be available on that day. I suppose I am, but.
I will.
Yeah. Let's see, Dawn and. Anna Mike, wait, um. The marijuana, uh. Questionnaire will well tomorrow's mail, finally.
What? Oh.
I was just saying, reminding everybody the marijuana and, and the, uh. Yeah, that was the other thing. I did not in advance ask. The code officer about tiny. Houses, I literally just did, since he asked me about something else. He indicated you have a lot to say about it, but I don't necessarily, it's. Telling me anything that's written in our ordinances that we didn't find.
The other thing that's on the. Agenda. Is the fee schedule. And tiny houses.
Right, well, as I said, I just literally just asked, uh. Bruce Mullins, he asked me something, I replied asking that. And my email's in a cupboard, so I can't see it. But I know I, that's one thing I did manage to do, and I did not find anything to indicate, we have no minimum house size. There is nothing in the new state law that changes. Things like requiring an acre for. Single family residence. So. Fee schedule, um, I did not ask Dennis, I don't know why, I do know why, but that's alright. No excuse. But I'm gonna say we operate in the assumption that, or at least the recommendation is that they all be moved to the select. Select board. As a matter of fact, that's part of what Bruce contacted me about, was he couldn't find in the ordinance a blasting for permit fee, and I'm pretty sure the. Select board does do that, but.
Okay, I will. If we, then we could just take out that part of the building. Code, I mean, the building section of the. Of the ordinance. The part where the fees are.
Right.
And then they can decide, I mean.
Where it says what it is, we have to say there's a fee to selectman's fee schedule.
Right. Somebody has to decide how the fee is going to be based on. Uh, you know, square footage or. I think what it says in the ordinance now, it's on the.
Estimated market value or something.
Yeah, which is hard to deal with.
Well, we can look into that aspect of, and make a recommendation, um, see what other towns do.
Yeah, most of them do by square foot, I looked up, um, Bath and Damascada and Gardner.
So much per square foot.
And they most did it all by square foot.
Which would be somewhat related to final market or final value.
Well. Square foot, so much per square foot would not. If the market value went up.
No, but you, well, but the slot could.
Right, oh yes, they can change it.
I mean, if it, this year's average cost is whatever, a hundred dollars per square foot to build, the next year it's three thousand, like enough a fee. Or lower, whichever they feel like doing, but. Sounds like a fun meeting whenever they do it.
Right.
I know I, you know, personally think so, the subdivision and site fees should go up, because. We're paying now firmly and paying higher mail costs because of Zoom. Generally. And I don't think I, at least. As a planning board chairman, I don't want us to be involved with having to worry about, you know, who, if we build on a, on a. On an actual fee plus or fee basis for. on an actual fee plus or fee basis for, you know, having to forward those out to members to the, to the applicant. Who's going to track that? Who's going to send that invoice? Not it. So I'd rather, I'd rather it was a flat fee, but.
Yeah. This, the fees that we're taking out of the the chapter two. But there are also fees in subdivision ordinance inside when review ordinance. Or is that just all under the?
Compare the fee schedule and the ordinance. I know there's, I know there's fees for subdivision, but where they're located at the moment, I'm not positive. You probably know this because I know I'm going to get asked right soon by an applicant. Be sending Emily more work. Ten lots. Ten lots, no new road.
Where is it?
It's not in yet, so I don't want to, I can't say.
Oh, all right.
Hasn't even been other than, but been asked, yeah, they'll be all, all along one, one road. But we might, might see that as early as the last meeting in the month. There's a pre-application anyway. All right. Okay. You're caught up? Do we have anything else?
No, I think if, if Emily not Emily, Anna can send us the you know, revise.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Whatever she did there.
I will do that.
Code of ethics.
Code of ethics.
It might not be today, but it will be this week.
And, and I will.
It's better than I can promise, Anna.
I'll work on the facility use thing. And send, send a draft out, then we can discuss it next time, so. Okay.
Sounds good. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I apologize if I'm not pulling my weight and I know I'm not, but I know from a recent meeting with some others that surveyors board, sir, we are starting, my compatriots say they're starting to form lists of to be put on the list. You can't be put on the list, but you can be put on the list to be put on the list sometime.
Wow.
Because they don't want to commit and take a retainer for work they're not going to do until June of next year. So somewhere in February you might get noticed to send your check. Congratulations, you've been put on the list. All right. Well, I hope everybody has a happy Merry Christmas. Oh, yeah. The, the 27th is Monday after Christmas. I will be here.
Okay, I will be here.
I can be here. Chris.
I'll probably be here.
Chris.
I might be here. It's
working. Okay, and I might be back. They will be back. I don't know.
It'll be us. Don? Did Don ever get in?
No, I never got in. Not on my list. And not emails. Nope. He didn't respond to my email, so. All right, and we'll plan a whole in the meeting.
Okay.
And it'll be, I can't imagine that we're going to turn this COVID situation around between 13 days, but.
I'm in Washington state, so I really hope it's on Zoom.
Lucky you. Wait, that'll be a three hour time difference.
Yeah.
I have friends who keep forgetting to come to a meeting which held on five thirty on, on weekdays once in a while because of the time difference and they're only in Denver. All right. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Anna moves second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It looks to be unanimous and the meeting is over. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, six thirty.
Thank you.
Okay, see you later.
Bye.
Bye bye. Stop sharing screen. Stop share.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
I stopped sharing.
Leave.
Get my email back up. Yes.
Guys, I'm sorry. It's Susan Johns.
Yes, Susan.
The, the, um, looking at the planning board agenda, I didn't notice a time. Is it seven o'clock or?
Yeah, seven.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'm not even leaving.
I just sent everybody the code.
Did you send anybody the code?
Yeah, Lowery's on here.
Yeah, I don't know. Sometimes you can get on, sometimes you can't. But anyway, I sent it to all the members.
Oh yeah. Um, Lester stopped by this morning just to kind of catch up. Encourage you to at least try by phone.
Yeah.
Dog.
Just got an email from Rebecca Graham who's on the on the Edgecombe Planning Board in ORC. She works for MMA. And she sent out a thing that notice from the I guess, DEP about shore land and keeping track of the size of the houses in shore land that have been increased in size so that they won't increase more than 30% or whatever it is.
Right.
So
Hello.
Sound like something I wouldn't want to know.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
But that seemed like it would be a horrible job to go back and figure out what the size of the houses were before.
Well, there's already, I mean, they've it's a matter of keeping track. They'd have had to file for an expansion permit. So it should be a permanent file on the property.
Right.
Which has the house as it was before it was expanded. Yeah.
Right, but it seemed to me that they were having this log of all the houses, what their original size was. Anyway, it seemed like a horrible job to do.
Hopefully, they don't mean existing only, hopefully, it only comes up when you go to expand. Of course, now if somebody expands without a permit, gets away with it.
Right. But this was sort of creating a whole
Yeah. Sort of like creating a database for all the signs out of town.
Right.
How big they are, what color they are.
Just don't know anybody in Edgecombe that would be doing that.
No, can't imagine that. Must be somebody over there to do that.
How are you guys tonight?
Very good, and you?
Good, thank you. Figured I'd just pop on and introduce myself real quick, but you know. So.
Yeah, we haven't, obviously, we don't start until
Certainly.
Three more minutes, but yeah.
I just
Aren't you glad you didn't have to drive up?
Drive to Whiskassett is actually not too bad once you get north of Portland.
That's how I felt Friday night coming back from April. It's still a pretty good sized project, even though it's not a physical structure.
Yeah, I had, I figured out probably about three to, you know, three and a third acres of between what we're looking at for paving and gravel. So we'll
There's a ramp by the back door, isn't there? Only one more minute.
We have a few more members. Deb is here. You and I.
I'm not seeing her. Gallery?
I can see her.
Oh, there's Deb. But that makes three. Need two more, right?
Right.
You know, Emily, you don't even have to be a resident to be on the planning board.
Is it a conflict of interest if I'm working for the town to review plans and be on the planning board?
I don't know that. We haven't adopted a code of ethics yet. But we can write into it that it's not. Hi, Deb, nice to see you. Yeah, you're muted.
12 days before Christmas.
Yeah. No! I'm sure I have project deadlines that fall before Christmas. Oh, well. Well, it is 7:01. We're still waiting for a quorum. We need two more members. Let's see who I've got. I don't have him.
Who are you looking for?
Peter.
What is phone number?
Sure.
Eight eight two six seven eight four.
Sorry, eight eight two.
Eight eight two six seven eight four.
Try him. Dial 207. Do that again. Hi, Peter. You going to be able to join planning board tonight? Oh. You need a passcode. Hang on.
I just emailed it to him.
He, Jackie just emailed it to you. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Bye. All right, who else can we call?
Steve Wallace.
Steve Wallace.
Eight eight two seven two three seven.
Sorry for the holdup, folks. Seven two three seven?
Yeah, seven two three seven.
Nope. Been changed or not in service.
Okay, well, then we have. Al Cohen. Four six two oh seven five oh.
But I think he's in my contacts.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, by the way.
Good evening.
I had a little snag.
Yeah, well, those did too. Hi, this is Carl Olson. Is Al available? Yeah. Oh, never mind. I, I got, I got a warm body and his is, he can stay nice and warm. All right. Thanks. Tell him to enjoy. Thank you. Bye bye.
Oh, Steve.
Don't say where Al is. We'd all be jealous, but we have a quorum. All right. Quorum being present. I'm calling the meeting of December thirteenth, the planning board to order. First order is the approval of the minutes of November twenty. Uh, yeah, November twenty second. Their motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any additions, corrections? Hearing none. Motion to approve. A call for roll call vote. I vote yes, Jackie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
And leaving out. That's it. unanimous vote of those present. Okay, you know, the other item of business tonight is an application. For an expansion of Ames True Value Hardware, and we'll be hearing from Mr. Bowery here somewhere. There you go. It's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is James Lowry. Sumner.
Uh-oh, frozen. Mr. Lowry, you're frozen.
Give a, a quick overview of what we were looking to do. Can I? Access. Can you enable screen?
I can enable screen sharing in theory. Hold on. Multiple persons can share someone. Yeah, you should have the ability.
All right, thank you.
Something's happening.
Okay, can you all see that? Okay. So, um, we have. As all know where Ames True Value is, the. Existing building right here that was, was built back in the oh four, oh five timeframe. The site, as you see it, if you can follow my hand around the screen, is about a twelve acre parcel. The, the current buildout is, is down here, you know, in the immediate, immediate vicinity to Route One. And what the proposed project will do is look to expand. An area out here sort of to the, to the north, you know, towards town. To, to expand the abilities of, of the applicant to have additional. Outdoor storage area, some more parking, things along those lines here in towards the front of the site. Able to expand into the rear with and, and sort of level out a portion as you, as you go. In the back, the, the site sort of rises in terrain, so to be able to level out a portion right back here in this area. And use that for some additional. Storage and, and keeping some more outdoor type items and, and Sumner, by all means. Hop in on that type of thing if you care to. Couple of interesting. Items with regard to the site is there is a, the commercial residential zone line crosses. Right through here, just back about. We had read about five hundred feet from Route One. So you've got commercial zone towards Route One, of course, and the residential zone towards the, the rear. What? To the building, no addition to anything to the building. What we are looking to do is there's an existing. Wet pond right over here in this area that. Of course, would be impacted by the additional asphalt, so we'd likely replace that with an underground detention system. And then do another basin or two for stormwater to adhere to. For stormwater. This site, if you may be aware, required a site location of development permit through the. State back in two thousand and four, when they originally constructed it, so. Our part of our permitting will be to amend that, that permit and. Have some additional wetland impact, so it will. Ended in R P A permit as well. The expansion, just dimensionally, as you guys. Make care is, it's about a hundred and fifty feet of additional work right over here in this area. Bear with me. Can you guys still see the color plan?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just want to make sure. This area. Of expansion is about two hundred and forty feet back from the current edge of pavement. And then what we've tried to do is leave a bit of a buffer, undisturbed buffer. To some degree, back behind the site and adjacent to the. The residential areas back in the, in the rear, so. That is the, the nuts and bolts of what we're looking to do. Sumner, I don't know if you want to add anything, but. Ultimately, you know, we just wanted to present this to the board. Gather any feedback that you guys may have, answer any questions, and you know, before we get into the. You know, heavy part of the design and permitting.
Thank you. Your nice colored here has this green line. Buffering in, but what I'm saying is that the existing parking lot already, or paved area already crosses the property line.
The one spot in the back.
Yeah, there. Hello. I mean, it can't be something we allowed. We certainly can't allow.
And I'm, I got a little bit of an area. Was, uh, was, was this area, was this what you, where you were referring to?
Yes, yeah, well, yeah, right there.
Yep, that. Ultimately, something that occurred in the past that, that probably one thing I didn't explain is the red. Area here is, you know, outlined is, is the proposed, so. You know, we, of course, can work with. With, with Sumner and his father to. Look to correct that if that is indeed across the property line.
Yeah, I'm sure that's not, that would indicate this isn't built to the original site plan exactly. Because we would have never permitted that.
Sure.
We could, we can't permit you to cross a boundary line.
I believe, I, I'll have to go back and check. I believe this boundary right through here may have been approximate. Or depicted right now as approximate. I'll check the survey plan and, and we'll look to verify that.
Yes, well, if you don't have one, of course, you'll need a new survey, but.
Yeah, we, we have done a, a, we have had a new survey performed, and I'll have, I'll just double check. That, that this line is what the, I'll double check what the reference of that line is. Of course, is the, it's the, the C M P transmission line.
Right.
Didn't describe that very well either, but that's, that's what's over in that area.
Yes, that. Yes, that section was just, was part of a, a, a transmission upgrade we approved earlier this year, late last year.
So I will, I will certainly look into, to that.
Yeah, based on what you're showing, this is a. This will not pass as a diminished change. This is a full blown site plan change, so.
No, no, that's what we, uh, that's why we wanted to get in front of the board and, you know, just, just. Have your thoughts. You can answer some questions right up front.
There's probably parts from the original application you can reuse, like probably the hydro geological report, which, if there was one, I. Probably got my name on it, but I, I don't remember the details of the approval.
You're, you're referring to a hydro geological or a stormwater type of report?
Uh, I don't remember if our site plan calls for hydro geological or not. I know subdivision does.
Okay.
Obviously, you'll need a, you know, you're gonna need a new, highly revised stormwater. I mean, you're, you're taking out some wetlands, you're. Burying or otherwise changing a retention chamber area.
Right.
And you're gonna fill a lot of land out back.
Well, most of out back is, is, would be more of a cut. As it goes up the hill where we're looking to, to flatten that area a little bit to make it a little more usable. That will be a little more of a, get into a, a more of a cut than a fill area.
Okay, so then you're redirecting drainage to these stormwater facilities.
Yes, I mean, we'll definitely, yeah, be grading this so that it, it gets to the stormwater areas as appropriate as we need to. You know, of course, having the, the. Existing site location, you know, we'll have to match all of the, the pre versus post runoff rates. Take care of any of our new impervious areas through stormwater treatment B M Ps. The whole nine yards there through the D E P.
All right. Click the project. Already a big place. Any planning board member have a comment or question? Is there anybody here that's a member of the public who wants to ask a question? Okay, you'll see one of our people on this meet, the call is Emily Rab. She's a consultant hired by the town through Lincoln County. Planning and she will be. Doing some of the prime reviews.
Okay. Should I direct? Our site plan application to Emily?
We will redirect it to her, but you could include her directly if you wanted to.
All right. One. One question, you know, we did want to make sure we, we discussed is in this area. In the rear of the site where this is, this zone line cuts right through here if there would be any. Any, anything that you guys had, had thoughts of if we were to use this as an expanded area for. The. The current store.
I'm trying to think what would be an issue. One of the biggest ones might be percentage of lot coverage, but I'm not sure where that would come into play. I was thinking that for the whole property, but I don't remember what it says about that for the commercial zone. It's not a separate freestanding lot. It's not even accessible except through this property.
Correct. No more, more just where it, it gets back into the residential zone.
Yeah, I realize that.
But if, if, you know, I know a lot of times, a lot of town. For, you know, if, if like a site like this, that's predominantly commercial, about seventy percent of the site is commercial. They will allow for an existing commercial used to encroach into. A, a, say a residential portion that's within the property and just wanted to, just wanted to bring that up and, and make sure. That, that everyone was, was good there before we, because that, that will impact what we do, you know. With this area and surfacing it and, and. Then the stormwater management from that.
Yeah, I'm, I would have to reread my residential zone. Restrictions. I don't think of us as being terribly, terribly overly restrictive on uses, so. Not like you're building the store back there. It's just basically parking, lay down, storage.
Available to the public.
Yeah.
You know. For public use. You know, it wouldn't be gated or anything, but it would be more for internal use.
Right, it's there use, yeah, it's there use, but. Um, I can try to remember to look into that. I don't know, is anybody planning board memory can quote off their head? I can see, I bet Emily's looking at it right now. Yeah, she is. It's not a separate lot, so even, but it looks like it's over an acre anyway, so.
Yes, this gravel area back here is roughly two acres.
Yeah, plus, plus the park, that's not gonna be disturbed.
Yeah, correct, right.
Oh, all right. Well, if we think of something in the next couple of days. We'll let you know.
Okay.
Off my head and I'm not gonna, I never try to research while I'm conducting meetings, so.
No, no, certainly understood. I just.
Board members, any questions? Concerns? All right, then. All right, then. I'll try to get back to you and. Your question about the usage of that. And I'm sure in your next iteration of plans, you'll be addressing my question about that corner, unfortunately.
Yes, we will make sure to. Look into that.
Because if exists, we're gonna have to correct that, and that's gonna cause a problem. All right. Well, thank you very much. Does anybody have any other business to bring up before the board?
So I, I think I, my internet is a little. Being a little funky. It must, they must, this must be the time when they slow the speed down, so. I didn't quite hear that, all of that last question.
Oh, I was asking if the board has any other business, and any member has anything to bring before the board. Or a call for an adjournment. All right. All right, then.
And thank everyone. I, I. Assume we're.
You're done.
For. Your time tonight, and we will. Get something back over to you guys.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty six. With the happy holidays included with that motion. To everyone. Because twelve days to Christmas, we're not gonna see each other again until it's over.
No. And we will be meeting on the twenty seventh, the Monday after.
Yeah.
If there's business. All right, then. Uh, there was a motion. Was there a second?
There was a second.
Thank you. All of us in favor, say aye. Merry Christmas to all and to all.
Thank you, guys.
Emily, I'll imagine we'll talk tomorrow or whatever when you finish your research.
Yeah, sounds good. Have a good night.
You too.
Night.